Good evening. It is Wednesday, April 10th, and it's 6:00 PM at this time. I would like to open the Mashpee zoning appeals meeting for this evening. First, I would like to mention that this meeting is being televised on local cable network, Channel 8. Second, I would like to announce that Chairman Ronald Bonvey is not present at today's meeting, and I, Sharon Sangalia, Vice Chair, will be proceeding over tonight's meeting. I would also like to mention that Ron will be attending via Zoom and is still able to participate and vote. In addition to myself, Bill Belsdell and Jonathan Ferbush are here, as well as Associate Board members George Ganzer-Miner and Charlie Reedy. In addition to the members, the following people are seated at the table. Mary Ann Romano, Administrator Secretary and Pechi Engineer. If we all could rise to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would like to officially start the meeting by opening up to public comment. Does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any of the agenda items listed tonight? If yes, please check in with Mary Ann, the Board Administrator Secretary, and you may have three minutes to speak on your topic.
Nothing.
Nothing? George, would you like to read the first continued hearing for tonight?
Sure. Seventeen Monomoskoy Road West. Owners, Bria St. John Trust and Bria D. St. John and Eleanor C. St. John trustees, request a special permit under Section 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling with attached garage and place it with a new single-family dwelling with an attached garage on property located in R3 zoning district, map 114, parcel 20, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from March 27, 2024 hearings at the request of the board and attorney.
You want to come up?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain, I represent the St. Johns. I filed a letter of withdrawal without prejudice for this project as it did not get approved at conservation at the last meeting.
Charlie, would you like to read that letter?
Yep. It's a letter dated April 8, 2024, directed to Ron Bonvey, Chairman, relative to Seventeen Monomoskoy Road. Dear Mr. Bonvey, it is requested that the applicants be permitted to withdraw the request for a special permit without prejudice. Thank you in anticipation of your cooperation. Very truly yours, Christopher Corain, counsel for the petitioners.
All right. Should I do that now?
Yeah.
Okay. Voting on this motion will be John, myself, Bill, George, and Charlie. Charlie, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Relative to Seventeen Monomoskoy Road, I move that we accept the request of the applicant and counsel to withdraw their request for a special permit without prejudice.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
All in favor? Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Bobby Silverberg?
I'm sorry.
Bobby Silverberg?
He's doing good. Yeah. Everything was good from Doc.
It got?
No sign of them.
Uh huh. Good. Good news.
Good news.
Doesn't matter where it's signed.
Down the bottom somewhere.
Is it 410? 410.
410.
Today's the 10th. Yeah. 410. Twenty-four.
All right. Sitting on our next hearing will be John, myself, Bill, George, and Charlie. George, would you like to read in the next new hearing?
Two thirty-six, new hearings. Two thirty-six Wheeler Road. Petitioner Tyler Gaudrea requests a written finding under Section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an elevated boardwalk and stairs to access Ashment Pond on a property located in R5 zoning district, map 49, parcel 27, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Stephen Dupree.
Okay. Hi.
Good evening, members of the board. Tyler Gaudrea of Environmental Landscape Solutions, representing my client, Stephen Dupree, for the proposed construction of an elevated boardwalk at two thirty-six Wheeler Road. The existing site consists of a set of stairs within the inland bank to the northern portion of the proposed boardwalk. The boardwalk is four feet wide. It's proposed timber structure with Trex material for the platforms, and we recently were approved by conservation. There's mitigation as well. There's no changes to any of the setbacks, no disturbance or no changes to the building footprint, just simply the construction of the stairs within the inland bank. And I'll open it to any questions.
So that's it? Ripping out the old one, putting the new one in? Actually, it's moving, I see.
Yeah. So my understanding is we're requesting a written finding because there's existing stairs, and we're actually just putting new ones in. So it's a replacement, although it's not in the same footprint. The reason for the shift was grade, and then we're also leaving all the remaining trees on site.
And I see you're moving further away from the lot line. Is that true?
Yeah. So we're actually, yeah, so it's more towards the center. The client wanted to move it away from, there's not really much of a buffer from the neighbor there, and the hatch area that you see is part of the mitigation. So it'll actually give a little bit more privacy and enhance the resource area as well.
Yeah, it looks like you were right up against the lot line at one point of the stairs that will be removed.
Yes.
So this is a good, though?
Yes. Correct.
I see no major problems. Charlie, would you read in the comments from the different departments, please?
Okay, I'll start off with a comment from Dave Morris from the Building Commission Department. Relative to two thirty-six Wheeler, no issues, stairs require a building permit. Next would be the Conservation Commission information relative to two thirty-six Wheeler Road. Resource areas, land underwater bodies and waterways, inland bank and rare species habitat. Construction of access stairs on an inland bank leading to Ashment Pond. Reconstruction of existing retaining wall in same footprint and vista pruning slash beach nourishment. Project received a vote of approval at the March 7 hearing with conditions to replace retaining wall footing with helical anchors and use of washed clean sand for nourishment. Revised plan submitted and order of condition, permit issued. And the only other one was relative to, that would be the board of health, and that indicates no change in septic flow, no comment. Do I think?
Do we have any comments from the audience? Hearing with there none? Does someone want to close?
Public comments.
Public comments?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Charlie, would you like to make a motion regarding this application?
I will try to do that, thank you. Just make sure that the condition relative to the Conservation Department is, yeah, okay.
Yes.
A motion relative to two thirty-six Wheeler Road. Petitioner Tyler Gaudrea requests a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an elevated boardwalk and stairs to access Ashment Pond on a property located in R5 zoning district, map 49, parcel 27, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Stephen Dupree.
Okay. Hi.
Good evening, members of the board. Tyler Gaudrea of Environmental Landscape Solutions, representing my client, Stephen Dupree, for the proposed construction of an elevated boardwalk at two thirty-six Wheeler Road. The existing site consists of a set of stairs within the inland bank to the northern portion of the proposed boardwalk. The boardwalk is four feet wide. It's proposed timber structure with Trex material for the platforms, and we recently were approved by conservation. There's mitigation as well. There's no changes to any of the setbacks, no disturbance or no changes to the building footprint, just simply the construction of the stairs within the inland bank. And I'll open it to any questions.
So that's it? Ripping out the old one, putting the new one in? Actually, it's moving, I see.
Yeah. So my understanding is we're requesting a written finding because there's existing stairs, and we're actually just putting new ones in. So it's a replacement, although it's not in the same footprint. The reason for the shift was grade, and then we're also leaving all the remaining trees on site.
And I see you're moving further away from the lot line. Is that true?
Yeah. So we're actually, yeah, so it's more towards the center. The client wanted to move it away from, there's not really much of a buffer from the neighbor there, and the hatch area that you see is part of the mitigation. So it'll actually give a little bit more privacy and enhance the resource area as well.
Yeah, it looks like you were right up against the lot line at one point of the stairs that will be removed.
Yes.
So this is a good, though?
Yes.
Correct.
I see no major problems. Charlie, would you read in the comments from the different departments, please?
Okay, I'll start off with a comment from Dave Morris from the Building Commission Department. Relative to two thirty-six Wheeler, no issues, stairs require a building permit. Next would be the Conservation Commission information relative to two thirty-six Wheeler Road. Resource areas, land underwater bodies and waterways, inland bank and rare species habitat. Construction of access stairs on an inland bank leading to Ashment Pond. Reconstruction of existing retaining wall in same footprint and vista pruning slash beach nourishment. Project received a vote of approval at the March 7 hearing with conditions to replace retaining wall footing with helical anchors and use of washed clean sand for nourishment. Revised plan submitted and order of condition, permit issued. And the only other one was relative to, that would be the board of health, and that indicates no change in septic flow, no comment. Do I think?
Do we have any comments from the audience? Hearing with there none? Does someone want to close?
Public comments.
Public comments?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Charlie, would you like to make a motion regarding this application?
I will try to do that, thank you. Just make sure that the condition relative to the Conservation Department is, yeah, okay.
Yes.
A motion relative to two thirty-six Wheeler Road. Petitioner Tyler Gaudrea requests a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an elevated boardwalk and stairs to access Ashment Pond on property located in an R5 zoning district, map 49, parcel 27, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Stephen Dupree, with the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Laws 40A, Section 6. Number two, existing conditions planned, prepared for Stephen Dupree, two thirty-six Wheeler Road, scale one inch equals twenty feet. Date, December 8, 2023. Sheet one of one, prepared by D.H. Martin Engineering, Inc., snap and signed by David H. Martin, civil professional engineer, number 4956921124. And Gary S. Labrie, registered land surveyor, number 400392124. Number three, conservation landscape plan. Project location, two thirty-six Wheeler Road. Property owner, Stephen Dupree. Drawing by TG, checked by MP. Date, 1/29/24. Revisions, 2/26/24. Revised boardwalk footprint, 2/29/24. Revised plan list, 3/13/24. Revised com comments, prepared by Environmental Landscape Solutions LLC. Conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Conservation Department, Board of Health, and Building Department comments. Number five, the board finds under 174-17 and 174-33 that the proposed elevated boardwalk and stairs is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure to the town or the neighborhood.
I'll second.
All those, Charlie, how do you vote?
Vote yes.
George?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. George, would you like to read in first other business?
First other business. Five Shore Drive. Attorney Christopher Corain, on behalf of his client's owners Desmond and Joan Kelly, requests approval of an architectural design change pursuant to Section 174-24C9A of the zoning bylaws, received a special permit under Section 174-17.1, SP-22311.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, for the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Desmond and Joan Kelly. They're the owners of property located at Five Shore Drive. This was a raise and replace project that was approved by the board back in April of last year. They have asked me to come back before this board for a minor modification for an architectural design detail. If you notice the plans that I submitted with my letter, originally approved by this board was a kind of three-season room with screened-in panels, and they want to change the panels to windows. There's no changes to any setbacks. They're not changing the footprint. There's nothing, nothing changing to the footprint of the structure. They just want to swap out the panels and do windows instead. So they go on from basically screens to windows? That's correct.
That's it?
That's it. But any changes have to come back before this board. Again, since it's a minor change, you know, it is allowable, quote-unquote administratively by this board under C9A.
Couldn't agree more.
Do we have any other comments?
Do we have any comments on this?
We have one comment. That's from Dave Morris, the Building Commissioner. And relative to Five Shore Drive, Mr. Morris indicates no issues with design change.
All right. Is this a vote, or is this just a?
No. Anybody have a public comment out there?
Are there any public comment? No? Okay.
Close public comment.
We got a close? Okay. Can I have a motion to close?
Mark to the close.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Charlie, would you like to read in the motion?
Yeah, let me just make sure I have it here. Oh, here we go. Just bear with me, please.
I have it here, Charlie, if you want it.
I've got it. Five Shore Drive?
Yes.
Our, relative to Five Shore Drive, the board moves to accept the motion relative to that address. Attorney Christopher Corain, on behalf of his client, owners Desmond and Joan Kelly, request approval of an architectural design change pursuant to 174-24C9A of the zoning bylaws, received a special permit under 174-17.1, special permit 2023-11.
All those in favor?
I'll second it.
There was a second.
Oh.
Yeah.
Second.
George seconds.
Oh, yeah. And we're all in favor, aren't we?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
I'm surprised you couldn't have just...
David wanted it to come back before the board.
Thank you, Christopher.
A minor change?
That's like...
Okay. Easy enough?
George, would you like to read our ne, no, she's not ready?
No.
We have to sign this, too?
That you voted yes.
Okay.
All right. I'm in the middle.
No, not this time, you're not.
Have George read both of them.
Okay.
We'll do everything we can.
I think all that we have is what's on the notice, George.
Yep. I'll see.
Here, George, just read the, both of them.
Okay.
I think he can hear us. Will he hear us?
Yeah, fine.
Okay. Bill was worried.
You're being tough.
Loud and clear.
Okay.
All right. George, would you like to read in our next two other businesses?
Forty Evergreen Circle, board to approve and request additional funds for the applicant to pay PC Engineering invoice dated March 27, 2024. Forty Evergreen Circle, board to discuss PC Engineering's email dated March 28, 2024, and determine how to move forward.
Let's do the additional funds first.
Let's discuss the engine.
All right. Whatever. Why don't you have Ed make the presentation?
Sure. Hi, everybody, and thanks for having me here. It's a real pleasure working with your team. I want to say thank you to Mary Ann. She's been a pleasure to work with these last couple of years on various projects. Both Mary Ann and Dave Morris are just a good group to work with, so I'm pretty lucky in that regard. Tonight is something that I know that you don't always see and something you don't always understand or have an issue with, but for longer projects, sometimes the contractor takes a little longer to finish something that requires us to visit the site and so on that, you know, we should kind of do some thinking about planning what that cost ought to be. What I have before you is an invoice for services to date. The project is not 100% complete at the end of the fall last year. I mentioned this to Mary Ann, the remaining things, there's a couple of minor things that are remaining, final paving, final signage, final landscaping, to make sure it's all stable. So there are still some more inspections to be done, not a significant amount, and of course, it's next door to 50 Evergreen whenever they start that. Haven't been notified that they started it. I actually drove by it today. I should have gone into Evergreen Circle to look. Could have done that today, but I'll eventually look at it probably over the weekend. But at any rate, what you have before you is a problem with the current amount of funds. And let me just give you an explanation or a recommendation overall on how this is handled in two other communities that I deal with. So I'm also the consulting engineer for the Mashpee, excuse me, for the Marshfield, I do this all the time, Marshfield Zoning Board of Appeals, and also the Nantucket Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals. And in Nantucket, the way that we work it is, depending on the size of the project, what we try to do is notify, become part of your conditions, notify the applicant that there'll be a certain amount of engineering escrow account established, and when it drops down below a level, they have to replenish it. So for instance, you could establish a $5,000 amount at the beginning of a project, okay? And then when it drops down below 2,500, they have to provide the town a check for another 2,500, so it's always at around 5,000 at any one time. At the end of the project, if there's any funds left over, it's returned back to the applicant. So that's how they work it, and it's pretty successful. Sometimes they, the town staff, don't know how much to ask for and whether the replenishment is necessary until I send them the invoice. And oh, it's gone down below 2,500 or whatever number we establish, and they have to notify them, so it takes a couple extra weeks to process an invoice. But that's how it, that's how it works.
What's the benefits of doing it your way versus the way we're doing it? Does it speed up the process for the people?
Well, the way you're doing it is you picked a $5,000 amount, and I might say that you did honor and pay the first invoice for review services, and that was $2,800. And if the project was done in two months, sure, that would have been enough. The 5,000 would have covered all of it. But now you have an invoice for 42?
Yep, 4293.
Call it 43?
Yep.
And I'm not done yet. Still not done yet. So 5,000 doesn't cover it. I mean, you could, you could go to 7,500, but then there's no contingency. The advantage that I'm offering is there's no contingency when the number gets whittled down. Right. And then you got to go back to the applicant and ask for additional funds. They, in the town of Marshfield, they just ask the applicant for additional funds. They establish, they get, ask for an estimate from me, they ask for that basically at a condition of approval. The applicant has to provide a certain amount, usually it's 5,000 upfront during the review process, and then the condition of approval is a certain amount also added. And then if it runs out, they run out, they ask them for another, another check. They ask me for an estimate of what that is. So does Nantucket. Nantucket does that, especially if it's a project that's close to the end. Hey, Ed, I'm not going to ask them for 2,500 or 3,000. How much do you think you need to wrap this up? Because if you ask me today, how much would we need to wrap this up? I might say we have two visits. I could review an Asbilly plan, we haven't got that yet, and two visits. So, I don't know, maybe $1,000? So it wouldn't need to be 2,500, but yes. So at that point, we can play it by ear. At the very end, you can play it by ear. So my recommendation would be that, sure, you could put in the 5,000, but then you provide some protection for both the town and for your engineer to recover additional funds when necessary.
Ron, any comments up there?
Just a question. I can only say I'm doing some research. I'd like to, I can only tell you that I'm doing some research. I'd like to get back to the board with my findings, and I'll update the board at the next meeting. Do you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, great. I think we need to do a little research. I'm going to do that research and present it to the board the next meeting.
Okay.
I just have a question relative to the mechanics.
Sure.
Now, assume the project goes forward, there's a request that $5,000 be paid and to be held. That's held by the town?
Correct.
Okay. And relative to the town treasurer, the town treasurer would release some portion of that as bills come in to the town from you?
I don't know how you do it, so can't really answer that question. I'm not the one who pays the bills, but I would assume that that's how it's done. You establish an escrow.
So generally, we get a check from, we request the check from the applicant. I'd make a deposit under a certain number, account number, and deposit that with the treasurer. Then, under a separate account number, when we know it's time to pay, we get approval, excuse me, through MUNIS is the program that we go through. And we get, we have to go through an approval process before I can actually pay it, even though it's just, you know, here's the amount, you know, already there, and then it gets paid. But it gets, approval process is through town manager, anything over 1,000. So then he releases the, you know, he requests the purchase order number with that amount, explaining it goes to, you know, Ed Pechi's under 40 Evergreen, for example. Then, you know...
Looking at it from the perspective of our responsibility, once, say, the $5,000 is held by the town treasurer, by the town, we don't have any further responsibility relative to the disbursement of that?
The zoning board doesn't?
Or the invoices.
Well, you do indirectly by approving an invoice.
Right.
Correct.
We're going to approve this one tonight.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Well, technically, you need to approve that, and if the count is only $5,000, my number, you add the two invoices you've gotten on this, you're at 7112, 7112.
Right, so they're short.
So they're short $2,112.40.
Right.
So you need to ask the applicant for $2,200 or something, whatever you feel like, whatever you feel is appropriate.
Plus, you got two more coming.
You got two more.
Correct, but it sounds like the chairman wanted to do some research before you decide how to handle that with them. But you could certainly ask them for a $3,000 check to at least get us over the hump and have a little leftover.
We could certainly handle this tonight.
Right.
This invoice tonight.
Right.
And going forward, we can discuss that at the next meeting.
Yeah.
On the best way to handle it.
I'm good with that, yes. I just didn't know the mechanics of how the money got...
The planning board has a similar process, but I know they have their own budget amount for consulting engineering, too, so I don't know how, exactly how that works.
Ron, do you have another comment?
Yeah, so as I said earlier, I reached out to Chris Corain and asked him to replenish the account in the amount of $5,000, at which time, anything left over was given back to the applicant.
Correct. Okay, so...
That way, it should be fine.
So, Chris, you've already been asked for the 5,000 from Ron?
Well, yes, I've been asked, yes, I was provided that.
Okay. So we can, we can just approve this tonight?
Chris has a comment?
I just have a question. I don't recall for this one. Did we deposit, did we do an initial deposit of $5,000 on this one? So Ed's first bill was 2,800. So there's 1,200 sitting there. And so 1,200 will be put a put against the 43 that's this bill. And then the question remains to be seen what other.
There's two more visits required.
Two more visits plus the paperwork, whatever it's called.
It's an Asbilled, Asbilled. So what I what I do is review the Asbilled plan, make sure it includes all the information that should be there. Then I write you a letter saying I've reviewed everything and everything's in good shape. So you have something to close out the project. So does the applicant. The applicant wants that letter from me, too. Sometimes the contractor doesn't even get paid till he sees that letter. So, you know, that helps. It helps them get a certificate of occupancy is a number of things that triggers that. So it helps with the with the with the staff. So that's what I would need to do. So I'm just guessing, you know, there's a couple of visits, you know, a few hundred dollars each, several hundred dollars each, and, you know, I'm thinking $1,000 would cover it. So right now, right now, the 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 total amount for the two invoices is $7,100, as you just heard me, 7112. You know.
And the five and five will be 10.
So correct.
So you should be, you should be offset.
Right. I mean, you could you could technically ask them.
Ron already requested five more on this project.
With the understanding that be returning at least.
Exactly. Whatever the difference is.
1,500, 1,000, right, something like that.
Back to the escrow account.
Yeah, it's easy.
I think it's easy.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only thing from the board's perspective, I think going forward is, you know, what what's the scope of the of the services that are going to be provided going forward? I think this board is really focused on, I think, two things. One is, you know, from Ed's expertise is the site plan and stormwater management and reviewing the, the, I keep, the O and M.
O and M.
The O and M plan. I mean, those are really, I think, the things that this board is focused on is not having that technical expertise that they they're looking for Ed to help with that. You know, there may be other things, you know, that, you know, the septic reviews and things like that, that you have town departments that handle that. So, you know, my my goal is to look out for my clients' pocketbook a little bit. So, but, you know, I just, you know, that may be one thing to think about is when we're, because we don't really have, I don't know if, Ed, you give the town a scope of services prior to the when they, yeah. So I don't.
I mean, I did. I had to apply for, I had to make a scope, I had to put a scope of work together for the initial contract. So that's, I did have to do that. So I do, I definitely do an engineering peer review. We all have seen those.
Right.
And then after that, I do site work, construction related items that pertain, that don't pertain to other departments that do their own reviews, like the water, the water district does their own reviews. The Board of Health does their own reviews. But I look at all the stormwater work. I look at, I look at the parking lot, making sure the parking lot is not going to fail. Some of these sites, obviously, they're they're private locations, but they're open to the public. So at the end of Evergreen, where the, I want to say Best Buy Beverage, I think that's it, right?
Best Buy is the first one.
The first one on the right.
Yeah.
Right. Across from the Cross and Kit Kat Coffee. You know, that's definitely open to the public. While it's a private site, it's open to the public. So I want to make sure that there's adequate safety there, there's adequate signage there, that the that the gravel base under the parking lot is done is is correct, that civ analysis is correct. I get all that. I do all that review. And usually, it doesn't take that much effort. Really, usually it doesn't do that. But we went through $2,800 of the $5,000 account before we even got construction started. So and over time, it took took time to get through it. So I completely understand the balance of the need to oversee some of this work and not overspend, because I'm not there. We're not there every day either. So when, quite frankly, when when paving operations happen, we're there for maybe an hour, hour and a half. And then we, you know, depending on where it is. For that site, we were making spot visits. We weren't there babysitting the paver every day, every every hour. And they were pretty much done in one day. But there was a lot of work to do before they got to that point. And the stormwater system has not been activated, quote, yet, because it's not final pavement yet. So I got to have, I got to put a punch list together and and make sure they take care of that and that the system will operate the way you approved it.
Sounds good.
Any other comments?
I apologize if I think I mispronounced the name of the firm's Pesci Engineering.
Just like Joe Pesci.
Sorry about that.
I no, no, no worries. I have a brother named Joe, believe it or not, believe it or not. And he's in California.
No relation, though, right?
No relation.
So all we got to really do right now is approve this, right?
Yeah, we only approved the the invoice because otherwise we need a specific amount.
Well, are we going to approve an additional 5,000?
Ron's already taken care of requesting the 5,000.
Yes, so add into an addition, add in the amount of 5,000.
The board to approve and request an additional fund of $5,000 from the applicant to pay Pesci Engineering invoice dated March 27, 2024. We don't need to put anything in there about funds being returned at this point.
No.
So I wanted to make sure of.
We don't have to do anything.
Okay with you too, Chris?
Yep.
Do we have a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
Motion relative to 40 Evergreen Circle, the board to approve and request an additional $5,000 in funds from the applicant to pay Pesci Engineering invoice dated March 27, 2024. Takes care of it?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good work.
She passes.
Thank you.
George, would you like to read the next other business?
Approve the meeting minutes to Wednesday, March 27, 2024.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
George, would you like to make an additional, the last motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we close tonight's meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Good night.
Good night.